Good evening, we'll try that again. And welcome to the Chatham Select Board October 12th meeting. This meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please notify me. Pursuant to Governor Baker's June 16, 2021 signing of an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, including the extension of his March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. That's General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20, until April 1, 2022, this meeting of the Chatham Select Board is being conducted both in person and via remote for public participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410. Our conference ID is 134208476, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Channel 18, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. And a reminder again, please mute your mic and turn off your cameras unless speaking before the Select Board. First thing I'll do is have a roll call. Board Member Dave Davis.
Present.
Board Member Metters.
Present.
Board Member DeCastro.
Present.
Board Member Dykens is not available tonight, and the Chair is present. What we're going to do tonight is we start with an executive session. We'll go into executive session and then we'll be back after that, maybe half an hour or less than that, about that. And then we'll go through our agenda. If I could have a motion, please, to go into executive session and returning to the meeting.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
I move that the Select Board go into executive session under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21, Number 3, to discuss strategy regarding pending and threatened litigation, shabe construction fish pier contract claims. And the Chair declares that an open meeting would be detrimental to the litigating position of the body.
Second.
Second. Okay, we'll start with Mr. DeCastro.
Aye.
Mr. Metters.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
And the Chair says aye, and we'll be back shortly.
All right, we're back from executive session. Excuse me, let me give a little overview of where we're going today, tonight. Rather, we have two sets of minutes, October 5th and October 12th. Then we'll have public announcements and agenda item requests. Then we get into our new business. The first thing will be coronavirus and then second will be drinking water and testing. We'll then have public comments on our business agenda that'll follow. We do not have a consent agenda and we do not have a public hearing. So our business agenda, board discussion items, our special one day alcohol permit, two of them, A, first one and the second one for Witcher's, Witches Walk, the four, and then the 14th annual holiday shopping fair at the community center, then an update on the Fisherman Storage Area at Chatham Municipal Airport, and then finally committee appointments. So with that, let's move over to the minutes. First up are October 5th. If you want, we could have a motion and then have any changes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Castro.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On page, on the October 5th minutes on page six, under item four, the third paragraph, which begins John O'Toole, Chatham. In the second line, it says that the Summer Residence Advisory Committee recommended the establishment of new committee on capital projects. I didn't think that's what they did. I think they had considered it but didn't actually recommend. So I would, and I didn't check the rec, the video, but I would strike the word recommended and had put, put the phrase had considered.
Yeah, I had the same thing.
And then I, on the next page, third paragraph up from the bottom under section five, this has to do with the Eldridge Garage property. And this, the paragraph that begins it was noted that the committee goals, in the second sentence, third line, it was noted that the town wants to build a building that lasts a while. I don't think that that's what was said. That implies we're building a new building. I think I would just put, substitute the word support. The town wants to support a building that lasts a while. Those are my edits, thank you.
Okay, any others? I do have one more on that same page at seven, at the bottom, last paragraph. It says, there was a motion by Peter Kokolas. We had a little quick, quick discussion on that. It really wasn't a motion, it was a suggested motion. And so the real motion was on the next page at the top, rather than amended motion, it was the motion.
Got it.
Okay. Nothing else? Let's take a vote. Shereen.
Aye.
Cory.
Aye.
Dean.
Aye.
Chair says aye. Next set are October 12th minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second. Have a second, any changes? Dean.
Mr. Chairman, I think just to reflect the fullness of the discussion on the last page, page seven, I would suggest adding a new sentence, and a new sentence as a new paragraph. The board members, I'm sorry, board members offered various comments and observations regarding the comprehensive summary of
regarding the comprehensive summary of CPA projects since its inception, period. I'll read that back. Board members offered various comments and observations regarding the comprehensive summary of CPA projects since its inception.
Anything else? Okay, let's take a vote. Let's start with Dean.
Aye.
Corey.
Aye.
Shereen.
Aye.
Chair says aye. And next we have public announcements and agenda item requests, anything from the board or? Dean?
Mr. Chairman, we received today an invitation from the community, chair of the community, I'm sorry, the Charter Review Committee, which is meeting on November 9th to consider a proposal to amend the charter so that the board of, the select board would become the airport commission. And I would like to request an agenda item, which I hope we can have on for next week, that the select board consider sending a letter to the community, sorry, sending a letter to the Charter Review Committee in opposition to this proposed charter change. And I would suggest it be on the agenda for next Tuesday and that, for the reason that we might agree on a language of a letter and then we might want to finalize the issuance of the letter the following week in time for the committee to receive it. So that's my agenda item request. And connected with that, I would like to ask if town manager could provide us with a copy of the opinion that town council gave to the Charter Review Committee. It looks as though there was one because Chairman Carr quoted from it, or cited to it in his email today.
Sure, I'll look at, I did recall forwarding something to the board, but it might have been Attorney Costello's comments about what he said at the meeting versus, I'm sorry, versus an actual opinion, so let me just look into that.
Yeah, I don't recall seeing that, but that, if you could. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just so we know, so we have the budget summit for the next meeting.
The next meeting?
Yeah, so we'll either put this at the very beginning or at the end, but I'll speak with the chairman about that.
Okay, I don't want to interfere with that. I was just concerned that we might not resolve this in one, one session.
They could go to 26, I mean the.
It's fine with me, but if you want to do it on the, when's the budget summit, next week, right?
Next week, the 26th.
So you'd have to put this on for the second with one, one time only.
Right.
Because their meeting on the 9th.
Their meeting's on the night. If we put this on at the beginning, okay, let me, well, let me talk about it, I think.
So we'll note that there's a future agenda item request and we'll, we'll figure out that schedule.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you. Any other?
Yes.
Okay, Shereen, yep.
Just a reminder that there's town meeting this Saturday at Veterans Field, special town meeting at 9:30. We're going to vote on some important water articles, so I hope everybody can attend.
Yep, thank you, Shereen. And right after that is Oktoberfest.
Yes. Mr. Chair.
Starts at 10:30.
And to further note, we did our special town meeting preview show, it's on channel 18 as well as on demand and on YouTube. There was some discussion today amongst staff about the weather and a potential rain date, and if there's anything to report, I'm trying to wait it out until tomorrow, but we're still looking at Saturday, the 23rd, at 9:30 in the morning. Our weather delay date is the next day, Sunday, at 1:00 PM, and unless everyone wants to wear their Patriots gear, that's the same time as the game. So I just wanted to give it one more day. I talked to the moderator and the town clerk, we all agree, we want to do it when it's dry, so we're hoping that the, if there is rain, it comes in the afternoon on Saturday, but I'll let the board and the public know and we'll get, if we do delay it, if, we'll have it out in all communication channels that we have available.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anything else, or anything from the public? I see Elaine. Ms. Gibbs.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had made an agenda, I had made an agenda, is there feedback there?
Yeah, I, we're having a problem hearing you.
I'll try again. I made an agenda item request on September 21st. It is time sensitive, and I didn't note that it was listed for any upcoming agendas through December 31st. It's regarding the ban of all drinking water bottles of platinated plastic under a gallon, and it takes effect on 12/31. It had passed at the June 13th, on the second day of the June 13th town meeting, and there were only about 120 people present at the time, but that was the same town meeting when we first heard the term PFAS, and we first learned about the issues with wells four, five, eight, 10, and 11. And we've since learned that this could be a potential long-term problem with implications, and that we may have a water ban next year. So, one of the problems is you have to refrigerate water after you open it, and we're talking gallon bottles or, or larger, and I think that's a real inconvenience for people. This board does have the authority to postpone that, that effective date in the event of an emergency, and in my opinion, I think our wells and the drought situation would constitute such an emergency. I don't think people should have to drive off Cape to try and get bottled water for their needs. And I'd ask you do this as soon as possible because we all know, we've all been listening to the news and know that supplies of all goods are going to become a problem, and the stores would probably want to know as soon as possible that they can continue to stock it. I think it's counterintuitive to ban water right now when we're in this current situation. So I hope you will consider that as soon as possible, thank you.
Thank you, Elaine. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, let's continue with our agenda. Under new business, we start with coronavirus, and Dr. Dunkinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I realize time is already slipping away for your meeting, so I'll keep this as brief as possible. Let me quickly share my screen here. So the first slide that I have up is the one we show every time, which is the chronology of our COVID-19 confirmed cases in Chatham since the beginning of the pandemic. We currently have 400 confirmed cases in total since the beginning of the pandemic. We have four cases, so that's four cases so far in October of this year. As comparison, in October of 2020, we had eight cases for the month. So given that we are roughly halfway through the month, we're on pace to have just about as many cases this October as we had last October. So, you know, that's good news when you see where we were in the preceding months of August and September of this year. We are seeing the same downward trend that has been seen nationally. And so let me show you another figure, this is our percent positivity. And again, we are seeing that decline in our percent positivity from this kind of latest peak that we experienced back in August and September. And again, that mirrors the trend going on both statewide as well as nationally. Our percent, our 14-day percent positivity as of last Thursday, because remember, this is one of those parameters that the state only releases on a weekly basis, was at 2.53%. And that is down slightly from the previous two-week period, and it is the sixth lowest on Cape Cod. So, you know, if you remember last summer, we were the lowest in terms of percent positivity as well as our 14-day average daily incident rate, and then we had some spikes in late August and September, and now Chatham is trending downward again in both of those parameters. To put it in perspective, the statewide percent positivity rate as of last Thursday was 1.82%. Chatham was at 2.53, and Barnstable County was at 3.05. So we were just about in the middle of the statewide and the countywide rates, so that, you know, is trending in the right direction for Chatham. Of the four cases we've had so far this month, one is in a vaccinated individual, one individual we know was not vaccinated, and unfortunately, the other two individuals, we don't know their vaccination status. And that mirrors the same kind of data that we saw previously in August and September. So with that, that's all I have for you today, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Bob. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the audience? I don't see any. Does anyone? Okay, thank you, Dr. Bob. Next is our.
Thank you.
Drinking water and testing update from Tom Temple.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and select board members. Just a quick update, we did have our final inspection for well four on Monday, October 18th. We received a approval letter today, this morning. Weston and Sampson is fine tuning the chemical dosage over the next couple of days, and this will be done running through the waste, not into our distribution system. Once satisfied, they'll introduce it to well number four into the distribution system. So, great news that we got today. Well, five and eight remain offline until such time as the PFAS sample results are well below the mass maximum contaminated levels. With respect to the articles, I gave a brief, brief summary in my agenda report for articles two and three. Just a little history, 2010, the screens and castings were installed, traces of MBTE were found at the project. We did prolonged pumping back in 2018, I believe, showing the wells 10 and 11 that the contaminates had passed the site. Moving forward, this article that we're looking to try to have at town meeting on, on Saturday or Sunday, depending on the weather, we're looking to complete well 10 and 11 with the final design, engineering permitting, and major infrastructure needed for the support of wells 10 and 11. This would also provide us an alternate source for well five and eight while they're still down. We do also get access back to well four once we have the chemicals all squared away this week. So, that's article two. Article three was the water capital for the design of the treatment facility and to address the PFAS temporary treatment as well. That was in the amount of 1,400,000, again, for the design and permitting, for the permanent water treatment facility needed for the removal and treatment of iron and manganese, as well as PFOS for five and eight. We anticipate that, you know, this will probably take three years, once the stock construction to, to get that online for the permanent installation of the temporary would, would take place immediately. We were looking to get, as we indicated the last time we spoke, the two GAC vessels to allow the necessary blending that we need for, we'd like to treat well five, as I indicated the last, last time we spoke. It takes approximately five months for us to get the, the vessels to our facility, so with that said, you know, hopefully we have enough of a turnout on Saturday or Sunday for this, so that's something that we badly need. If anybody has any question, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions from the board? Seeing none, anything from the public? Let's, Elaine, okay, see your hands up.
Yes, regarding wells 10 and 11, how much is that article for, and how long will that take for that, them to be up and operational?
Yeah, that would, that article was for $4,500,000, and we're probably looking that, that facility would probably, for that building, I would think it's going to take at least to 2023, for the summer of 2023, for that to get constructed and completed.
So that means, what, five and eight are, may not be online for the temporary treatment until the spring? Or are you saying we can be pumping those sooner than that? Because if that's next summer and then two years for 10, 11, aren't we going to be short?
As I indicated, we're getting, we have the ability to utilize well four now, as well as we, we're hoping that we'll have well five back online in the spring of 2022.
And, and what about eight? Can eight come back on?
Eight also can be brought back on with the approval of the select board as well as mass DEP. We would require, we would, what would happen is we would go through the lead lag through well five. Once we go through well five, we're able to blend eight in with the well five, which will have no PFAS left in it, once it goes through that, a very minimal amount. We also have a testing sample through our, our station that we set up through a hydrant, and we're able to test before it goes into the distribution system, so we could test. And mass DEP would require us to do this testing throughout this whole process, and so, you know, we would have the ability to gain 900 to, you know, 1,000 gallons per, you know, per hour on that as well, if need be. So we'll be in a lot better shape than we have been over the last several months, you know, since early April.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Elaine. Anyone else? I see no one else, so we'll move on with our agenda. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Now we have public comments on our business agenda. Do we have anything from the board? Ah, the board. From the public, excuse me. Elaine, your hand's still up, is it, it's still, you want to make a comment on our next agenda item?
No, I'm all, thank you. I apologize.
No, that's fine, thank you. Okay, seeing none, we'll move ahead on our business agenda. First one is a special one day, all alcohol permit on Witch's, Witch's Walk. Is Teresa on?
She is.
I am.
Okay, welcome.
Hello.
Hello, just a couple, give us a couple of comments on it and then we'll move ahead.
Sure, we are doing Witch's Walk again this year, significantly smaller than past years. We've cut the number of participants almost in half. We are spreading people out a little bit, doing it a little differently, so we would like to have a few stops, have access to alcohol that some have had it before, but a couple are doing it new for us. So we've added, Chatham Cheese Company is going to be running one of our parties and the cookware.
Okay, any comments or questions from the board? Okay, we'll, we'll start with the Chatham Cheese, you need a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman.
Shereen.
I move to approve the special one day alcohol permit for all alcohol beverages to Teresa Malone as representative of Montomoy Community Services for the service.
I move to approve the special one day alcohol permit for all alcohol beverages to Teresa Malone as representative of Montomoy Community Services for service at Chatham Cheese Company, 902 Main Street on Saturday, October 30th, 2021, from 5:30 to 7:30 PM.
Second, any discussion? None? Let's take a vote. Mr. Castro.
Aye.
Mr. Matters.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Chair says aye. Let's move over to the next request for one day alcohol permit, Chatham Cookware. And Teresa has already made a comment on that, do I have any?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the special one day alcohol permit for alcohol beverages to Teresa Malone as representative of Montomoy Community Services for services at Chatham Cookware, 524 Main Street on Saturday, October 30th, 2021, from 5:30 to 7:30 PM.
Okay, second, 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 okay, take a vote. Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Matters.
Aye.
Mr. Castro.
Aye.
Chair says aye. Thank you, Teresa.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Okay, next up is the 14th Annual Holiday Shopping Fair at the Community Center. Is Sue on, or is it just?
We'll check in, either Sue Linkfield or Sharon was going to call in.
Yep, yep, we're both, I'm here, my parents on as well.
Excellent.
Okay, just give us a couple of comments.
Sure, thank you. So this is an annual shopping fair that we've had, this is the 14th, obviously with the exception of last year. Self-possessions go to our after-school program, the park program. We typically have about 45 vendors in our, we have it scheduled for November 13th, which is a Saturday from 9:00 to 3:00. We can totally scale it back a little bit, you know, due to COVID, I would assume with masks on, shopping, but this is a great event, you know, the kids in the park program help out, and it's, it's just a lot of fun, so everybody's asking if we can have it back, if we wanted to get the approval of that.
Okay, thank you, Sue. Any comments from the board? Have a motion? Well, let's say, we have a motion to approve the annual, the 14th Annual Shopping Fair at the Community Center.
So moved.
Second.
Second, discussion, none. Start with Mr. Castro.
Aye.
Mr. Matters.
Aye.
Ms. Davis. And the chair says aye. Thank you, Sue.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next is, let me get this right.
Mr. Chairman, I need to recuse myself from this discussion.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next one up is search for potential alternate locations for the Fisherman's Stores. Terry, I saw Terry was on before.
Good evening, yes.
Hey, welcome, Terry.
Sorry, I'm a little slow on the trigger here with putting on my camera, sorry about that. So, good evening. Again, my name is Terry Whalen, Principal Projects and Operations Administrator. And just following up on the board's discussion at the October 5th meeting regarding the relocation of the Fisherman's Storage area, included in your package, you have a staff report that outlines some of the details of the approach to find a new potential site and the considerations for establishing such a new use. So I'm just going to quickly run through the, basically a preliminary analysis that we just completed this afternoon. In, and again, as typically as we do with all our site selection analyses, we, we generally start with the universe being all our town-owned sites. And then for, to narrow this down a little bit, went through and conducted a preliminary screen on those sites, a primary screening for removing the airport property, because that's the whole reason for the action. The conservation and recreation parcels, landings, beaches, cemeteries, and properties less than one and a half acres were also removed from consideration. And then we did another secondary screen, or a secondary screen to further reduce the potential sites. So that, this was accomplished by applying a buffer of 250 feet from any structures. And this was based upon the average setback area of structures at the current location on the airport property. And this identified open areas on those remaining parcels. And then a final exclusionary screen was applied to the remaining parcels with an open area, for open area. And then we applied a 1.5-kilometer buffer from the airfield and excluding area under airport approaches. Basically, this resulted, and I'm going to share my screen real quickly here, just basically sharing the kind of final outcome of this analysis, basically resulted in the identification of a potential area in, at, in the water pollution control facility, Middle Road vicinity. So basically, after adjusting for the potential locations features, such as lagoons, the former landfill, solar array, and harbor master storage area, 1.5-acre area has been identified as being able to be accommodated, and that's indicated by the red, red polygon on the graphic that I've got up on the screen right now. So, and again, based upon planning and ongoing efforts and concerns for the Middle Road portion of this parcel, no test fit was conducted on the north side of the road. So basically, in closing, if this is a site the Select Board would like to consider, it can be reviewed further by staff for long-term compatibility with future water pollution control facility plans and the other items noted in the report, such as fencing, screening, cameras, gates, grading, clearing, and everything needed to develop a full concept for further consideration. So with that, I'll conclude and turn it back to the chair for any questions or comments.
Thanks, Terry. Corey?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, first of all, I'd like to thank the Airport Commission for their conversation, for their meeting the other evening, and their willingness to explore this extension for the current leaseholders. I thought it was very town-friendly, and I appreciate the efforts they put into the conversation. And I also appreciate the comments the Airport Commissioners put into defining that we need to have a transition if we, if we are going to look for a new location and to re, you know, relocate from the airport property. So I think it's a very collaborative effort. I'm thrilled that we have a potential site identified that we can pursue and kind of fine tune and kind of work out the details. So I would be supportive of that. You know, I think we need, do to, do need to step back to figure out how many leaseholders we are talking about, because I don't know if we know, we've confirmed how many of the existing leaseholders wish to pursue something like this. You know, so I'm supportive of moving forward. I think it would be the benefit of the town, because if we can consolidate all this stuff into one area, it would be far better than having it scattered all throughout town for a number of reasons. And I think it would be show support to the fishing community. So I'm supportive of pursuing further research on this site and see what we can work out for the benefit of everybody.
Thank you, Corey. Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Terry. I echo what Selectman Matters, Select Board Member Matters just said. I support examining this particular site more closely. It appears that this is the only conceivable site you've been able to come up with anyway. But it doesn't seem to me to be an outlandish result, and I think it's worth pursuing further. So, and I like the idea of a transition, and I hope that the Airport Commission, when they do meet on the second, will be able to accommodate this, this process going forward.
Thank you, Dean. Chairman. Yeah, I, I would, I would agree with both my colleagues. And, and thank you, Terry, for put, taking this on right away. And I would, the only thing I'd only add about that, that location is it's probably easier to patrol. So we don't have unwanted things in there. I, I would assume that. That's an assumption, but I would think so, given where it is and the location it's there. So I would agree that, you know, we should continue on, and I do thank the Airport Commission. They did vote to delay just the amount of time. They started with around six months or so, but they, they got into the discussion about whether, you know, is that worthwhile or not. And anyway, I don't know, do you need anything more from us or from Terry, from Terry?
No, Mr. Chair, we just wanted to give an update and also have a transmittal of the Airport Commission's action that they took.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. And thank you, Terry. And I guess we're good.
You're welcome. Good evening.
Okay, next up, I'll wait for Shereen to get up here, is the last thing on our agenda is the committee appointments for the Community Preservation Committee. Okay. Okay, we have two, two people, one, a replacement, and the other one is an open space representative. So could I have a motion on the first one, Conservation Representative?
Mr. Chairman, and this is for the Conservation, I mean, this is Community Preservation Committee Recommendation, appointments. I move to appoint Karen Laddan as the Conservation Representative to the Community Preservation Committee until June 30th, 2022, unless sooner revoked or her successor is appointed.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, take a vote. I'll start with Corey.
Aye.
Shereen?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Okay. Next, Open Space Representative.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I move to appoint Gary Tennyson as the Open Space Representative to the Community Preservation Committee until June 30th, 2024, unless sooner revoked or successor is appointed.
Second.
Second, discussion, seeing none. Start with Shereen.
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
The chair says aye, and that's it, unless you have anything? No? Okay, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, let's take a vote. We'll start with Dean.
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Shereen?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Good night, Chatham. Thank you.